July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Board of Equalization meeting to order. First item is roll call. Mr. Brett Towns.
Present.
That's Eleanor Tom.
Present.
And I'm Patrick Crawley and I'm here. I noticed what's properly posted. We have six property before the board. I believe all six of them are rep- uh, being represented by, uh, Mr. Mark Hoben who's with us today. And, uh, uh, we'll just, we'll call these individually as we get through. I see that you've got a, a bunch of material there. We, uh, just so you'll know, uh, we won't look at anything that was not offered in the evidence at the informal hearing.
Okay.
Uh, because this is an appeal.
Okay.
So it hadn't have been, uh, at the informal, uh, so that the, the decision of the, uh, assessor was based on whatever evidence was presented then. We will not, uh, look at new evidence. All right, the first item on the docket is our number B O E one-six-five. This is a property at forty-six oh-one North Nicholas Avenue. The, uh, Es- Esplande Apartments Acquisition LLC looks like the owner. And Mr. Mark Hoben is representing.
If you want to take one and.
I, I don't, I do not. If, if I've got it, if it was, if it was submitted at the informal.
It's all the same information.
We, I, uh. So I've already gone through and looked at everything in these things. The, uh, it looks like the assessor, oh, first of all, this is a count number ending in four-six-eight-five. The, uh, assessor initially had this at ten million, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and four hundred and sixty-two dollars. And, uh, then at the informal came down to nine point four million. And is that correct, assessor?
Yes, yes. Two million, five fifty-eight, four sixty-two, the four, nine point four million.
Yeah. And looks like the taxpayer is asking for seven million, five hundred and fifty thousand. Is that correct, Mr. Hoben?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Uh, tell us what you want us to know about this property.
Okay, um, if you want to go through the packet, which is the information all that was submitted informally, uh, with the assessor's office. First of all, I want to thank you for your time and appreciate, uh, the chance to be here, um, and, and present our case before the board. Um, we worked with the, uh, assessor's office informally, um, and made some progress, uh, on the assessments for these properties. Uh, this in particular is an apartment complex, uh, built in nineteen seventy. And on page three is, uh, the map of where it's located up near, uh, Lake Hefner. And there's two that are actually, they're kind of, all, all these are going to be paired. There's going to be two that are kind of next to each other. Um, and so this one is next to Wedgewood Village, uh, which is another property that we'll be, um, going over later. Uh, but it's, uh, nineteen seventy, um, year constructed. Um, and it has total units of a hundred and thirty-six units. Um, on page five, it shows the vacancies at nine percent, uh, as of January one. And then page four is our pro forma income approach, um, which, uh, takes the potential gross income of a million, four twenty-three, five hundred, uh, with a ten point nine percent vacancy. That's the, uh, vacancy, um, market vacancy that we've considered for all the properties. That's ten point nine percent, um, and then fifty percent for expenses. And then six point two cap with a effective tax rate of one point three-six to get a seven point six percent cap. Uh, the NOI is six thirty-four, one six, one sixty-nine divided by the seven point six percent cap is eight million, three hundred and eighty-eight, um, thousand. And what then we took a deduction for intangible business value. Um, a lot of these apartments, uh, don't get, um, there, there's, in the market, there's intangible value when it comes to, uh, apartment complexes similar to, they're kind of similar to hotels now with all the services and amenities that they, they provide. Um, and on the last pages of our pages, eleven, twelve, and thirteen are from major, uh, apartment multifamily, uh, corporations. And it's their, their balance sheet basically. Uh, and you'll see that the, uh, goodwill and tangible is highlighted. Uh, the line items over the last three or four years and then a total tangible asset value. And then, uh, I calculated off to the side the percentage of intangible versus tangible asset value. And for apartment income REIT, it ranged from one and a half to two and a half percent of the total tangible value, um, as goodwill. Um, and then also, uh, America Homes for Rent, um, ranges from one point nine to two point three percent. And then Sun Communities range from one point eight eight, or sorry, one point eight percent to twenty-two percent, um, in intangible value. We took a, an average or median of the, of the percentages and it was ten percent allowable for, um, you know, intangible value. And, uh, came to an indicated real estate only value of seven million, five hundred and forty-nine thousand. And then page six is the actual, uh, income statement that was provided. And then page, uh, seven are the vacancy rates, which show, you know, the increase in vacancy over the last year in, uh, Oklahoma City multifamily, uh, from seven and a half, a little over seven and a half percent up to ten point nine percent. And then page eight is our information from CoStar for our cap rate. And I believe we're pretty close to cap rates that the, uh, assessor's office is using. So that's kind of one, uh, common standpoint. And then on the last page, um, it's just the, uh, the income analysis of the assessor's office. And it's eight million, three hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and seven, which is, um, somewhere in, it's in the middle between where they're at nine point four million currently and where we're requesting a value of seven million, five hundred and forty-nine thousand. Um, and so we have to, you know, the board also consider that valuation as, uh, for this property of eight million, three hundred and forty-three thousand, nine oh-seven. The assessor, uh, said that they use sales and income. Um, the income approach is most applicable, uh, because the income also takes into consideration sales, uh, because the cap rate is derived from sales of other comparable properties. Um, and so the income approach is, is both the income and has a sales component to it. Um, and so it, it seems more, uh, reliable than, uh, a sales approach. Um, just from our research on a lot of these sales, there are ten thirty-one exchanges, um, there's port- portfolio sales. Um, ten thirty-one exchanges are where the, the owners are, there's tax incentives to purchase a property. They'll have, uh, a fund that they'll have to reinvest within, you know, a certain amount of days. Um, and they have to find a property to, uh, invest that, um, that money. And so they'll tendency to overpay on, on properties because of the tax implications that if they don't pay it, they'll have to pay that amount in, in capital gains tax. Um, so they'll go ahead and pay a higher amount and have the equity or, you know, try to, you know, justify the equity in the property, um, by overpaying a little bit. But those are just some of the, um, things we'd like the board to consider. Um, you know, the income approach that we're using and then the income approach that the assessor's office is using. Um, and, and that is all I have for, for to present, so.
Okay, we'll, uh, hear from the assessor.
Okay, uh, this property did sell as a portfolio sale for about ten point one billion dollars in twenty-one. Uh, we did take into account that it was a portfolio sale. We did, uh, work up an income approach, as he said, that came up to about eight point four million dollars. Uh, we did that, uh, using the information that was sent to us, which was partially, uh, the, it looks like there's summary pages that came from the actual rent roll and from the P and L statement. But we didn't have the actual, the actual documents. But, you know, being as that it was a one, they'd only had the property for one year, uh, that's what we had to work with. It would have, uh, we, you know, we like to have the actual rent roll and actual P and L if at all possible. But these look like they were actually were copied from the book, so we were.
Let me ask you, was all this presented at the informal?
Everything was, everything was, except for the back pages speaking about the intangible properties. And we, we disagree with the idea of intangible properties with the, uh, with apartment complexes. There, whenever you come in and you buy an apartment complex, you already have in place leases for six months every year, okay? So you already have a management company that may be in there. You may replace that with somebody else. And, uh, many times I've seen where these guys have come in and put in their own management software. So this idea, I think, is overblown that they're, uh, do, that they're buying fifteen percent of intangible values. And we're going to see that, that they've claimed that in some of their purchases on these things and they, and they come in cases. So what we did was, again, we looked at what the income said based on information we had. We also, uh, looked at the sale and we did come into a number that was somewhere in between. Cause as he says, there's been an awful lot of ten thirty-one sales, there've been an awful lot of REIT sales, et cetera. But that's just what the market is. And so we're trying just to determine a number that is fair based on the sales and on the income that's being presented to us. So, uh, other than that, I, I don't think I have anything else on this particular one.
So you're, uh, the assessor has come to the conclusion that this fair market value of this property, uh, in twenty twenty-two was nine point four million?
That's, that's what we, that's what we believe based on the income that was presented and other comparable sales.
Okay.
And what was it the year before? Because there was a sale in the mid, in the.
Well, in twenty twenty-two, it was ten, the T, uh, the, it was ten million, ninety-eight thousand.
Because of the sale?
Well, I've worked an awful lot of, of properties over the past couple of years. So it wouldn't be just, it wouldn't be just because of this sale, but because of many sales.
Okay.
I increased, uh, quite a few of them, as you know, because you've seen quite a few of them come before the board this year.
So last year with ten point.
Zero nine eight.
Zero nine eight.
Okay.
And I, I did present the intangible to Seth.
Okay, wait a minute, wait a minute. So let you respond to him, since, uh.
Sorry.
Now, what did cap rate did you put in?
We were using seven point five, similar to what they're using. We typically will just break them down to seven point two-five, seven point five, seven point seven-five, you know, because there's, you could have eighty of them if you wanted to, so, for ease of, of con- of calculation, that's what we did. So typically, I would say all of them, typically.
So seven point five percent cap rate, that's the neighborhood of seven point five percent?
Yes, sir.
All right.
So, and Mr. Uh, Hoben says that, uh, they did send this and he may have, it just wasn't, didn't, apparently didn't get copied into our documentation that we, that we sit down here, so.
Okay.
But again, I go back to the idea is we highly disagree with a lot of this intangible goodwill type thing in apartment complexes. Hotels where you have flags, franchises and that type of thing, and you're dealing with a highly, uh, management, a high management type situation uh, on, on daily rentals and, uh, and all that, yeah, certainly. But not so much on the apartment complex. We, we disagree with that premise.
Okay.
And the percentage we're requesting isn't, uh, you know, intangible of a hotel.
Did we make sure that the?
Yes, sir, I'm done, I'm, I'm done.
All right, thank you, I'm sorry.
For the intangible purposes, we're, you know, we're not asking for, uh, as much, uh, intangible that there are in hotels. Uh, you know, it's just a ten percent deduction. Uh, you know, even if there is any kind of percentage, uh, deduction, because it is in the marketplace, it's on the balance sheets. Uh, you know, there is intangible with, with multifamily. Uh, and so, um, you know, we just asked the board that, you know, their, their income value is eight point three million and we're at, uh, seven point five million, so we're pretty close on an income, you know, valuation of the, of the property. Um, and just ask the board that they, you know, please consider, consider those with the.
Okay.
Did you have a price per unit? I mean, an income effective gross, yeah, this gross, uh, is this seven thousand, six hundred and forty-eight? Or is it seven maybe?
Okay, so see, sorry, I didn't explain. On those, on those pages, those are market, that's market, uh, just data for expensive purposes. Um, and so that's, that's, that's for like the Oklahoma City market. So it's not, that's not, uh, specific, that's not property specific.
And that's out of a CoStar report, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And so pages nine and ten, those are, those are market information. The, uh, actual, uh, income is on page six.
So maybe to answer your question, where we're at, how many units, nine point four million?
One thirty-six.
So we're currently on at sixty-nine thousand, one seventeen per unit.
And, and how many units, we're talking about?
Hundred and thirty-six.
One thirty-six.
And, and so what is, so yours, I need to divide the seven, seven eight five four nine by one thirty-six, like?
So Mr. Hoben, on this, uh, intangible, on this intangible assets, when you purchase a property, you are asserting that you're buying that, correct?
Yes.
But for tax purposes, then we take it off, but when you sell that property, you roll that back in? Because you, is that what, is that what you would, as a, as a hotel, or as a apartment owner, would that be?
Well, you're selling the whole management and every, the, the business value, you know, the business name.
Right.
Everything, um, the, the personal property that's involved, um, all that. So it, it's kind of just lumps together and, and sold as a going concern.
But, but intangible will be sold back into it?
Yes. If, if they are able to maintain the intangible.
Exactly, yeah. No, it's, it's just a, I'm just giving you a scenario.
So what size are these apartments? They're not all the same, correct?
Uh, no, or on, uh, could we have?
Income.
Different, uh, there's types A one, B one.
Go to buildings?
C one, I'm not sure exactly.
I, I can find it for you real quick, goes condos appreciation, yes. Uh, oh, if you can get down to the bottom of that page.
Apartments in the, are they on the south side of North West Highway?
Yes.
Okay, and then near the addy rents or the, or near the, the.
Michael, bring up income actual, if you can. Income actual.
So take a hall of meridian, that on North West Highway.
They're on the lake.
There's a, there's a rental.
They're near the lake, yeah.
There's a, there's a furniture rental, like addy rents or something, it's right there on that corner. So these apartments are just, uh, west of there, west and south.
Yes, uh, west and south, west and south.
I, I know where Quagmire is, but I'm.
Yeah, if you, on, uh, page three, I have a Matt Hovert, like a satellite.
Yeah. I saw that. I was.
It's the yellow pen on the left.
Okay, there's MacArthur. The Meridian runs into the lake, but I couldn't figure out if the Meridian is where three is or if this is where Meridian is. Oh, okay, never mind.
Must be a main shop.
There are the floor plans for the property right there. You were asking about, again, its sizes, whatever, seven sixty square feet. Uh, scroll down, so two bedrooms, eleven hundred square feet.
There is a three bedroom.
Eleven fifty-seven square feet, yes.
Okay.
So.
When was the last remodel done on this or upgrade?
I, I couldn't tell you. Uh, we're not showing one recent.
But your clients bought this in twenty-one.
And it was a, a bull portfolio, um, ten thirty-one exchange. So there's four properties.
Oh, okay.
They, they purchased all four and it was the ten thirty-one exchange, so they have.
So how did they allocate out that amount to this property, do you know?
Uh, they, they just have it on the closing statement, the, the different values for each one.
Which goes back to our discussion in the past. You know, how do you ascertain what those sale prices are except what they filed by doc stamps, so. Again, I have nothing else, sorry.
Good. You're done?
Yeah, I'm done too.
All right, I'm going to close the hearing on B O E number one-sixty-five. I'll open up the hearing on B O E one-sixty-six. So just for record, Mr. Hoben is representing every property on the docket today.
Yes.
All right, B O E one-sixty-six is a count number ending in one zero one five. It's the property at eighty-eight hundred South Drexel, Drexel Flat Position, P I C L L C, and the owner. Looks like the assessor started out thirty-two million, six hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and came down at the informal to twenty-nine point five million.
Correct.
Taxpayer is asking for twenty-one million, four hundred and thirty-six, is that correct?
Oh, correct.
Okay. All right. We've seen, gone through all the, uh, everything that was presented at the, uh, informal. Hand it to Brett, please. And I'm presuming this, these documents that you're handing here were presented at the informal.
Correct.
And, all right, tell us what you want us to know. We've gone through all the stuff that we, uh, presented at the informal, anything new will be considered, but, uh.
Uh, it's very similar to, uh, the last property.
Okay.
Uh, it's based in the income analysis. This, this property, um, page three is, uh, the aerial, it's by the airport and, and Amazon warehouses. The, um, it's the property on the east side or the right side of the, of the, uh, of the map. And it's near the Erica, which is another property that we'll be, um, discussing. So, um, you know, there's a lot of assemblage going on, trying to, you know, acquire the, the properties that are nearby. Um, you know, kind of, um, you know, competition to the, to them to acquire both properties. Um, and so this is a nineteen eighty-three, um, apartment complex.
Yeah.
Built, yep, and it was, um, the twenty-twenty-two valuation was twenty-seven million, eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand. The twenty-three proposed value was thirty-two million, six ninety, seven twenty-four. Uh, and then the informal, uh, value is twenty-nine million, five hundred. Uh, we're requesting a value of twenty-one million, four hundred and thirty-six. And on the last page, um, is the assessor's income analysis, which is, um, twenty-six million, six hundred and forty-four thousand, one oh-seven. The main difference between the two, um, are the, um, expenses for the property. The, uh, fifty percent expenses, uh, versus thirty-eight point six-three, um, percent. You know, this is an older property, so typical, um, operating expenses are higher, uh, per the, uh, E G I than, than a newer, uh, facility. Um, and those typically are in the thirty percent range. You know, an older facility usually is well over the forty percent, uh, expense ratio. And we're using a fifty percent expense ratio. With the seven and a half percent cap rate, um, the county assessor is using seven point five percent as well. So the main difference is just the, uh, expenses on the property, um, that are the difference between our twenty-one million, four thirty-six. And then also the intangible value that's not being deducted from the assessor's income approach, um, of any kind of a percentage. We look at ten percent as a, as a good standard market percentage, um, for intangible value. And page five is the actual rent roll. This one has higher vacancy at seventeen point eight percent, um, vacancy. And I think that that's all the information I was going to present. The other information is all the same as the last one, it's all market information, the market vacancy, market cap rate and, um, market expenses, so.
Good. I'm looking at page, um.
Page eleven, yeah.
Yeah, page eleven.
Yep.
This is apparently when, uh, your client bought all this.
Yes.
And disregarding all the, the fees, escrow and what have you, uh, it looks like the total value of that being purchased was over thirty-one million dollars. Seven twenty-seven million and then the four million of intangibles, you know, round about, that comes up thirty-one, thirty-two million.
Yeah, it was, yeah, the real estate purchase was, uh, twenty-seven million, eight hundred and thirty-seven, five hundred. Like I said, this is an assemblage sale, so they, uh, they're purchasing up, they had the property, they purchased in twenty nineteen, right next door. They purchased this one in twenty twenty-one. Of course, you're going to likely overpay to get a competitive property, um, um, to combine with the property that you currently have. So that's, that's all I had to, um, say about the, the sale on the property is that it wasn't, you know, an assemblage sale. Uh, there, if you look at the aerial, there's really nothing, uh, there's no apartment complexes in the aerial shot, uh, except for those two, um, right there, and so.
Okay, well, yeah, but at the end of the day, they purchased this property for something over thirty-one million dollars.
Thirty-two million, seven fifty.
Okay. For an exact, let's figure that, what was the first? For an exact, let's figure that, what was the purchase in, uh, at the end of?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, so, uh, coming right into twenty-two at that point in time. And. I presume that's where the assessor initially had thirty-two million, six hundred and ninety thousand. Uh, and then came down to, at the informal, uh, twenty-nine point five.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, all these numbers are accurate, and this was presented at the informal, okay. All right, uh, if you don't have anything else?
Well, I'd like to say something.
I know, we'll say it, but here.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I thought you were gonna close us out.
Oh, no, no.
Okay, my apologies.
I'll hear from you first.
Okay, so, uh, if we go and look at the transfer detail on this for dock stamps that were paid on the property, the dock stamps of forty-one thousand, seven fifty-six equals, uh, the stated sale price of what, twenty, twenty-seven million, eight thirty-seven, go, yeah, twenty, twenty-seven million, eight thirty-seven, five hundred is what they claimed at the time that they filed revenue stamps. And this has been very typical of of several of these properties we've been seeing over the past few years. It's that fifteen percent, uh, is being, uh, is is a very common number to be allocated out of this intangible, what they claim is personality and intangible value, uh, which, you know, that's basically almost seventy-four hundred dollars in documentary stamps that should have been purchased at the time. Uh, that's been something that, uh, we have been discussing with the clerk's office for quite some time and and we feel like it it's not appropriate. Again, I'm gonna go.
Do you understand what you're saying? I thought you said the dock stamps that were.
No, that's what they allocated to the real estate. They said, oh, we're gonna allocate fifteen percent of this off to personal property and 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 intangibles. But in reality, just like you said, they actually paid thirty-two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand for it.
What's the forty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-six? I thought that's the dock stamp section.
That is. That's what I'm saying, is they should have bought another seventy-four hundred dollars worth of dock stamps at the time of closing.
Okay.
They didn't, or when they filed it, let me rephrase that, yes. So that's that's part of our issue with a lot of these properties that are being sold. Or, yeah, they're they're not, they're not claiming the appropriate amount of of the sale price.
So the dock stamps would reflect a sale price of twenty-seven million, eight thirty-seven. But the sale actually was.
Thirty-two million, seventy-two, yeah. That's, again, as we're trying to ascertain what market value of these properties are, we're having to go by what the dock stamps are filed on, what the what the numbers are telling us. And this is more and more common, and I could, I could tell you a couple of people that will, you know, call you up and tell you that that they don't believe it's appropriate, and they're on the other side of the, they're on the other side of the aisle from me, if you will. Um, again, I wanna touch back on these intangibles. Prior to this purchase, it was known as Cambridge Landing. So what's the business value of a name of a property if you're gonna change it after you buy it? Okay, and I I'm gonna go back into, now you have a new management staff, you're gonna have new software to keep up with everything. Uh, we just, again, feel like it's, uh, very overstated to to be throwing that much money at something you're saying is not taxable. So, I and I don't wanna beat that horse to death because we're gonna hear it again, but otherwise, we took the information that was provided, the income and expense information that was provided to us, and worked up an income approach that came up to about twenty-six million, six hundred and forty-five thousand, forty-four thousand. Again, we looked at the sales of this property and other properties, and we did come to a number that was that was less, and that's where we're at with the twenty-nine million, five hundred thousand. Um, let's see if there's anything else I have to say. Oh, we have mentioned CoStar. And, uh, and this was, this was related in CoStar too, since they talked about, uh, what the actual sale price was. Uh, on December twenty-first, twenty-one, this four-hundred unit property located eighty-hundred Drexel, sold as an, sold in an investment sale for thirty-two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand. So that's how it's been reported outside of, you know, our offices or whatever. You know, it's it's on the market, being disclosed as a sale for thirty-two million, seven hundred and fifty thousand. So, that's.
With the sale just really being a year old, for our purposes, because we're doing this one-on-one.
Correct, the this was, this was in regard to the December twenty-first, twenty-twenty-one sale.
And and our value now is just flat one year later?
Yes, twenty-one million, five hundred. And I don't have anything else, I'm sorry.
But at the end of the day, you're, you've got the fair market value of this property at twenty-nine point five million.
Yes, sir, that's what we believe, the market value of the real estate and and land, yes, yes.
Despite that it was sold for thirty-two.
Ag- again, we we will recognize the fact that portfolio type sale or, you know, assemblage type operation, that that type of thing. But, you know, we are trying to account, again, for what's going on with the sales, what the actual income is telling us. Which, that also makes me wonder, these guys, and I'm not saying your clients specifically, I'm just saying, it's a lot of these guys that are pl- that are buying these properties, they'll pay this money and then they'll come in and say, well, it's only producing this much money, it's only worth this much based on income approach. Well, they're using an awful low cap rate to do that, and that's not our fault, they're creating the market. So, uh, you know, we, they they can't be that stupid, okay? Let's just not, let's be blunt about it, they can't be that stupid to be losing that kind of money. I know it's, a lot of stuff is going on outside of our realm, I don't understand it, and it's really not up to us to understand it, we're just trying to do the best we can with the sales and the income that's provided to us.
Richard, you all use the identical cap rate, right?
It is pretty close, yes.
Okay, that, uh, yeah, I understand.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Hoben, any response?
Uh, no, just that, you know, just looking at, asked the board to consider both income approaches, um, as the valuation for the property. Um, ours is at twenty-one million and I believe theirs is at twenty, uh, six point six, and the current value is at twenty-nine point five. Uh, so, uh, just consider the income valuation as as the fair market value of the of the property.
Okay.
And you're counting probably yourself, right? There's not a whole bunch of apartments down there, right?
Uh, there's just the two right next to the Erica and and, uh, Drexel Flats.
Okay, any other questions from the board? All right, uh, I'm gonna close the hearing on BOE one sixty-six. Open up the hearing on BOE one sixty-seven, that's the account number ending in one zero five zero. It's a property at thirty-one thirty-one Southwest Eighty-Ninth Street, Bree Silver MF, thirty-one thirty-one O K L L C is the owner. Uh, looks like the, uh, assessor had this property at fifty-three million, one hundred and two thousand, four hundred dollars. Came down at the, uh, informal to a forty-nine million even. Is that correct, assessor?
Yes.
And the taxpayer is asking for thirty-two million, eight hundred and eighty thousand, that's correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Mr. Hoben, tell us what you want us to know about this property.
Okay, so this was, um, the property right next door to the one we just, uh, discussed, the Drexel Flats. Uh, this one's called the Erica. Um, both are, you know, pretty much the only apartment complexes, uh, in the near vicinity of the, uh, the area. And we basically looked at the income analysis, um, uh, for this property, looked at the actual income, and provided a value of of thirty-two million, eight hundred and eighty thousand. Um, the assessor's, uh, income approach comes in at, uh, forty-six million, seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, um, four hundred and twenty-seven. And the big difference is the expenses being, uh, allowed on their, uh, income approach. Um, it is twenty-six point nine percent, um, and we're using a forty percent, um, expense ratio. It is a twenty-year-old facility, uh, so it is in between that, um, you know, the older facilities and a newer facility. Um, and so, being the twenty-six point nine, it's more of a newer facility, uh, expense ratio, um, and not, uh, an older, uh, facility, which is indicated in the the actual, um, expenses of the property. Total expenses are are two million, forty thousand. If you add in the, uh, real estate or deduct the real estate taxes from those, you're at about one point three million. And the assessor's office is using, uh, one point three million or one point two eighty-nine, five ninety-nine. Um, so pretty close to the, um, expense ratio of the, or or the actual expenses of the property. And so we're we're just asking that the board consider, uh, you know, both the income approaches of thirty-two million, eight eighty, um, and forty-six million, uh, when looking at a at the fair market value of this property.
What was your expense percentage again, I'm sorry?
Uh, forty percent.
Two thousand and two, Bill?
Uh, yes, two thousand and one.
Okay. Uh, anything else right now?
That's all for now.
Okay, we'll hear from your assessor.
Yeah, I will agree that the, uh, that the total expenses, the expense ratio of twenty-seven percent does seem low for a property like this, uh, not, but again, we didn't get the actual profit and loss information. We did get the one-page summary of it, and I'm not sure that we agree with everything that was shown on there. So, uh, I think we did the best we could with what we had maybe previously. Uh, so, but the overall number of a hundred and eighteen thousand per unit that we had on the, uh, on the income was was certainly fair. The, uh, overall price of, or the overall value we have of the property now, let's see, we're at forty-nine million. And how many units do we have here, uh, three hundred and ninety-six? Uh, hopefully, now that would be, it would be good if I could calculate here. It's right, uh, what I say, we're three ninety-six. So we're at a hundred and twenty, just under a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars per unit, so it's, uh, we've seen an awful lot of hundred thousand dollar plus unit sales. Uh, I I would like to ask a question about, uh, who do you, who do you represent on this property? Who's who's the owner that you, or who you're representing?
The the owner of the property?
Yes.
Uh, Vestar Realty.
Vestar Realty?
Yes.
Okay, so it's owned, it, when did Vestar Realty come in, uh, come into ownership of this property?
Uh, in twenty-nineteen.
Twenty-nineteen, can you go to, can you go to the transfers tab, please?
Oh.
So we're showing the last sale that actually took place was in twenty-fifteen.
Okay.
So, this property.
Was it a boat buy again?
No.
Who is Bree Silver MF, if, who you're saying the owner is?
Vestar Realty, it's a, it's a, an entity of of them, so they have multiple, if you look at all the different names. Multiple entities.
Might I? So what they did, this is what's known as an entity sale. We had one of these come through a few years ago out of Edmund, it was known, it was the Oxford Oaks Properties. This is very similar to that, where they're coming through and they're going through the, uh, buying the, uh, membership interest at the Secretary of State level, and, uh, they're paying, in this case.
Dock stamps.
No dock stamps, no deed being filed, anything like that, this has been a bane on my existence for some years now. So, I'm just gonna say is that this property sold in November, uh, November twenty-sixth, twenty-nineteen, per CoStar, for forty-eight point two million dollars. And and at the, the thing that's highlighted on this is that neither the deed nor mortgage documents have been recorded at the time of this, and I printed this out in July of, or I'm sorry, June of twenty-twenty-three. So they transferred ownership, nobody ever knows about it. You know, we don't get dock stamp, uh, we don't get dock dock stamp fees, we don't have accurate income or or sale information and all that. And this has been going on quite some time, and it happens everywhere. Uh, but we find it extremely disturbing that they're doing this kind of thing. So, that being said, we still look at the information and all, and we and we did, we did work up an income expense information, and that's where we're at with forty-nine million, but.
What you're telling us is that these entities are doing a workaround where they don't have to.
Exactly.
What everybody else does.
Yes.
Well, they don't pay the dock stamps, but it also also limits your ability to set a fair market value based upon an arms length transaction sale.
Correct.
I know.
So, you know, and I know Mr. Hoben doesn't have anything to do with with that, but this is dealing, I I do wanna read part of the statutes that go to this, it says that this is, uh, Article twenty-eight, Section twenty-eight oh two dot one, definitions of, well, anyway. For purposes of implementing, any person means any in person or entity, whether real or official, other than the present owner. And then following down into paragraph four, it says, transfers, change or conveyance of title means all types of transfers, changes or conveyances of any interest, whether legal or equitable, which is what we believe this part is. So. I like to say, we've done our research on this for quite some time, and we met with, at the time, the head of the Oklahoma Tax Commission, it was Steve Burridge, and this has been four or five years ago, and Tony Maston, who was also with him at that point in time. And we said, we described all of this, and his point, or his belief was, is that, yes, this is conveyance. Uh, that it was a transfer of ownership, the cap laws that are in place or whatever is ba- is for the enjoyment of the property owner at that point in time. And they were in agreement with us that this is, uh, I won't say it's fraudulent, I mean, you know, because they're a transfer in it, but they're saying that it's it's not right based on what the statutes say about conveyance of property.
And the bottom line on that statute is that if they have the conveyance, then they do the process.
Somebody.
There needs to be a deed file and then it needs to be a documentary stamp, and you gotta put value on the transfer. This is like a no value transfer.
Correct. So. Again, is is that, all that being aside.
Who can do something about that?
Well, we we've talked to the O T C at length, we were, you know, trying to talk to people at the state level. You know, so many people don't wanna hear it or they don't understand it.
Yeah, this is an attorney general.
Uh, the issue with the previous one in Oxford Oaks is they significantly lowered the value when they did it.
Yes, and as I recall in that deal, the 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 agent for the owner admitted that that's exactly what they did. But what he, but then, as I recall, he said it's a dumpster fire, and they were going in there doing a whole lot of renovation and all that. So, anyway, we've been working on that one as it comes back and.
Because I attended that meeting.
Who lowered the value?
As they transferred it from one of their entities to another, they lowered the value of the property. Lowered the taxable.
Which you fetch your app, lower rate, yeah, okay.
Anyway, I'm sorry I went off on my, got on my soapbox, but.
Well, it lets us, well, it lets us know since we 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 pay attention to sales price. And it really puts us at a disadvantage because we have to discount it because the sale is so old. I mean, the value of an old sale, uh, and we have to make a lot of assumptions about appreciation and all this other stuff. We could just be guessing, you know.
All we know is that the market's been extremely strong the past few years.
Right.
But this is basically meant to save people money, because like I said, dock stamps aren't paid if there's a difference between the cap, uh, the cap, uh, the taxable value versus the, uh, full market value. That the cap doesn't come off, you know, that type of thing, so it can be, it it's problematic, so, that's all I have.
I can tell you, as a former attorney general, this is, this is something that. I can tell you, as a former attorney general, this is this is something that would somebody would have, or.
Well.
And it's not cute.
I mean, I I see where they're, I see both standpoints on it, but the, you know, they're conveying, they're purchasing the entire going concern of the property and just leaving everything as is.
Ghosting everything.
And just keeping all the assets under the same names and.
Yeah.
Same everything. So, you know, I see that portion of it, but I also see that, yeah, there there is a transfer of, you know, of ownership from from one to another, but it's a, you know, kinda like a stock purchase. I mean, if you, you know, if you look at a stock purchase, is that, you know, a transaction of even though the real estate kinda goes along, is it really just a transfer of real estate? It's not, it's, you know, the stock is being purchased.
And nobody likes to pay taxes, but you want your roads paved, you want your schools big and all that stuff, that it's bound to be okay. Okay, all right. Anything else on this property?
I'm about to have.
Okay, and then I'm gonna close the hearing on V O E one sixty-seven, which is a down coming in ending in ten fifty. I'm gonna open up the hearing on V O E one sixty-nine, number four on our docket, its account number ending in thirty-nine oh-five. It's the property of forty-one oh-one Northwest Expressway, which is the Wedgewood Apartments. I think we addressed this earlier, it's part of something else. The owner is Wedgewood Apartment Acquisitions LLC, the accessory, it's that, or had this initially at forty-five million, five hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-seven dollars, and came down the informal to twenty-two million, is that right?
Yes, sir.
All right, and it looks like the taxpayer is asking for eighteen million, two hundred and forty thousand.
Correct.
All right, Mr. Hoben, tell us what you want us to know about these Wedgewood Apartments.
Wedgewood Apartments is similar to the other property, Espinod Apartments on the by the lake. They're they're very close in proximity to each other and similar age constructed. This is original year constructed nineteen seventy-four. And we did an income analysis that comes in at eighteen million, two hundred and forty thousand, and the assessors is nineteen million, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, six thirteen. The current value is twenty-two million, so it's still still high. You know, this was a portfolio transaction with a ten thirty-one exchange for all four properties. You know, the the sale price really shouldn't be considered as a, you know, as a market deemed deemed a fair market transaction, as it's not from one owner, one property from one owner to the other without any, you know, incentives or things like that nature. So.
When did your client obtain?
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one, and what 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 was the sale price?
Well, the allocation was twenty-three million, sorry, yeah, twenty-three million, nine hundred and eighty-six thousand, five sixty-two.
Okay.
And you're asking for, what year was this, twenty-one, just barely a year ago?
Twenty-one.
And you diminished time?
It's not, it's not a fair market, it's a ten thirty-one exchange with a portfolio transaction. So this is just.
You're saying they over allocated?
I'm saying they they could have, yeah. They they had a total portfolio transaction where they're using ten thirty-one exchange funds. And we're using an income, we're using the actual income of the property to value the property, and same with the assessor's office. And we're within one million in value. They're at nineteen point five million, and we're at eighteen point two million in income valuation. Seven point six percent cap, seven point five percent cap, you know, it's pretty pretty close to a similar valuation, you know, within within ten percent.
All right, well, this was purchased, let me duck the what were the doc stamps at that time?
I think it was on the twenty-three.
Twenty-three million?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, anything else right now?
That's all.
Okay, we'll hear from the assessor.
Mark, do you know what the total sell price of all four of those properties were, by chance?
I don't.
But you're saying that this twenty-three, almost twenty-four million was what was allocated just with this property right here?
Yes.
Got the four?
And and for the four, is it gonna be the Drexel?
Forty-two point five million.
Drexel Flats was.
And there was four properties.
The four being?
Only two of them are appealed.
Which two?
Drexel Flats.
Drexel Flat, or no, sorry, Wedgewood and Espinod by the lake.
Oh, Espinod.
Right.
The two that were not appealed, Mansion West Apartments and Salem West Apartments.
Okay.
So were your other ones, the other three that we did, are they in the same transaction?
Uh, no.
No, okay.
Just Wedgewood and Espinod.
Okay, okay, and okay, but for the four, it was a total forty-two, five?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So just following along with the same thing we've talked about previously is that we worked up an income approach based on the the information that was provided, which got us to a little over nineteen million, five twenty-seven, which was sixty-five, almost sixty-five one per unit. Then looking at the sales again, that put us in the neighborhood of, say, we've looked at other ones. And so we're at twenty-two million now, which is seventy-three thousand per unit. Again, based on the number of sales and all that we've seen over the past couple of years. And I will, I do wanna say this, is that what was, how old is this property? This is built?
Seventy-four.
Seventy-four? The past couple of years, we've seen a quite a number of these older properties that have sold, and and the numbers per unit have gone up dramatically. Prior, and, you know, all of the newer properties that sold, so people are trying to find someplace else to put their money, and so what they're doing is moving down to the older, less desirable properties. But still, what that's doing is supplying demand, you know, we need to spend some money, and so that's what we're, that's what we're buying. A lot of them are being renovated pretty heavily, some are not, but it's 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 not unusual, it doesn't seem like to see, you know, sixty-five, seventy-five thousand dollars per unit being being paid for these properties that are the seventies vintage, which just a few years ago was unheard of. So just based on what we've seen the past couple of years, the the value that we've that we put on, we feel like we're being fair.
All right, Bennett?
Yes, sir.
All right, any response, Mr. Hoben?
Yeah, I forgot to mention on page fourteen, it's just the sales.
Which which?
This is the Wedgewood.
We got all the, Brett?
Yes, sir. At twenty, at twenty-two million, the values per unit is seventy-three thousand, but the assessor's sales, the median, price per unit is fifty thousand, three hundred and five, which would be about a fifteen million dollar value.
Why the difference?
That's the adjustment, I guess, adjustments they made to to theirs, to where the.
It's costing you.
That's why I was just pointing out the, yeah, the median is fifty thousand, and like twenty-two million is at seventy-three thousand a unit.
Okay.
Good. That is?
Yes, sir.
All right, we'll close the hearing on V O E one sixty-nine, open up the hearing on V O E one seventy, which is number five on our docket, its account number ending in four-two five zero. This is the property at thirty-eight thirty-four North Oak Road Drive in Midwest City Ridge Best Living LLC. Looks like the assessor had it initially at fifteen million, nine hundred and point nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars, and it came down at the informal, it appears, at thirteen point nine. Are you talking?
I said thank you.
Oh, okay. Talking while I'm talking. Thirteen point nine million is what the assessor come up with, and the taxpayer is asking for eleven million, six hundred and forty-five thousand. All right, Mr. Hoben, tell us what you want us to know about these apartments.
Okay, you know, these are.
Living, whatever that is.
Older multifamily apartments, built nineteen seventy-two, total units are two hundred and seventy-eight. We're requesting an income valuation of eleven million, six hundred and twenty-five thousand. The assessor's income is twelve million, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven oh seven. So, you know, again, we're within ten percent in income, income model, so pretty, pretty close to the same valuation on that. And then the page five just shows the vacancy of the property, has a eleven point seven percent vacancy, not including, not including the excluded property or units of eight, eight units. And I believe that's the same information that was presented previously. So this is similar property to, or not similar property, but close in proximity to the Ridge Apartments, or sorry, the Fairfax Apartments. Page three is a a map, shows where the two are. You can see the yellow pins are where the Ridge Apartments are located and the Fairfax Apartments are located. So we just asked the board to consider, you know, the income analysis for both the assessor and the taxpayer as fair market value for the property.
Okay.
Is this just an apartment complex? That's our just a plain old apartment complex? Non-single living or discount?
No. This is the, this is the old apartments on the north side of Tenth Street.
Uh, yes.
What's the major intersection it's closest to?
Air Depot.
Yeah.
Air Depot or Tenth?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well.
Oh, so that where the where the seven eleven grocery, I mean, gas station is? Is that Air Depo?
Yeah.
No, Air Depot or is that?
That's right, Air Depot.
I think that's the seven eleven on the corner right there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think that is.
Well, it is the same.
Stop it, Rob, okay.
Yeah. There's the winged place.
All right, anything else right now?
That's all.
All right, we'll hear from the assessor.
So we took the income information that was provided to us, and we worked through it, and we did come to quite a bit lower number, and it came out with an expense ratio of almost sixty-six percent.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry?
Hi.
Well, it is an older property, maybe it's not being taken into care of as well, and and working through that, it it showed a value of, an income estimated value of eight point six million dollars, which is only about thirty-one thousand per unit. We did think that was pretty low based on what I just said a couple of minutes ago about the older properties, sales have come up substantially. And even so, I think our thirteen million, nine hundred and fifty thousand per unit, which is now on the lower end of what we're seeing these things sell for. I think we did lean more on the sales than we did on the income on this one, but it does look like the income on this one is 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 suffering.
What's the vacancy rate?
Vacancy rate, let's see, we only, see, we only allowed like about twelve, thirteen percent, that's probably higher than that.
It's fourteen percent.
It's how much?
Fourteen.
So it's so it is, it's only fourteen percent and still performing like that? So, yeah, and it said that it was only seventeen percent at the time of sale, so somewhat perplexed at it. Again, it's not as high as what some of them are that we've had in that in that age range. But again, we looked at what the income was, we looked at what the what the what the sales were. Yeah, I don't have much more to say about that.
Yeah. So that's sitting right in the middle of what's known as murder one.
So I, I'm, yeah, I know what you're, I know the area which you're you're talking about. So, you know, I might be a little bit more lenient on on moving towards the income side on this one instead of just the sales, but based on how it's performing.
Okay, there's a lot of apartments still. All right, anything else?
No, sir.
Mr. Hoben, anything?
Nothing, man.
Okay, I'm gonna close the hearing on V O E one seven zero and open up the hearing on the last one on our docket, which is V O E one seventy-one, its account number ending in one three three zero. It's the property at seventy-eight oh-one Northeast Tenth Street, it's the Fairfax Best Living LLC. Looks like the assessor had it initially at seventeen million, ten thousand dollars, and it went way down to fourteen point six million, looks like the taxpayers asking for ten million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. If both numbers are correct, we'll hear from Mr. Hoben on this property.
Okay, so that's similar to the last, you know, it's right, right similar area, built nineteen seventy-five. We're requesting an income valuation of ten million, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, and the assessor's income valuation, eleven million, one thirty-one, three seventy-three. So again, pretty close to similar valuations for the, based on the income of the property. And the actual, we'll look at the vacancy on this one is, let me calculate that real quick.
Seventeen percent. Close to seventeen.
Yeah, sixteen percent. And and so we're just asking the board to consider, you know, the income valuation of of the taxpayer and the assessor's office.
What's the total number of units?
Uh, it is two fifty-two.
And this is just an apartment complex?
It's right next to the one we just.
I was gonna say it's very close to the to that one.
Yeah, right down the street.
Yeah, just west Midwest Boulevard there. Yeah, just west Midwest Boulevard there.
What was the assessor's twenty-two valuation?
It was, uh, seven million, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine fifty-five.
Why the change?
Well, just what I was talking about a little while ago, the sales have been taking place on, on, on these older properties that are starting to come through.
And when did your, when did your, your finding corpus?
Uh, in twenty-one.
May of twenty-two is what the deed says.
Twenty-two, yeah.
Was this a portfolio sale along with the previous one we spoke of?
This one was not, no.
Okay, so they're just close, but they weren't related in the sale?
No.
Okay. Sorry, I shouldn't, I shouldn't have let you ask that.
But was it a...
It was, it was a ten thirty-one exchange.
Just not with anything else considered in there?
No.
Okay. Anything else on this material? All right, we'll hear from the assessor.
Very similar to what we talked about just a minute ago with the previous complex, uh, sale for seventeen million, which is, uh, sixty-seven plus per unit. Uh, we did lower it to this fourteen-six, which is about fifty-seven, nine, um, just under fifty-eight thousand per unit. The, say, we'll say again is that the income does show a much lower number, just looking at the sales that pulled it back up. But I do believe we're, we're sitting at fourteen-six and the sale price for the property... Oh, he does say it's at the ten thirty-one that was in, that was involved with it, was the seventeen million dollars, so... And, you know, we do typically look at ten thirty-ones with a jaded eye, if you will, because sometimes they're, sometimes they're legit, sometimes they're not. But, uh, that doesn't mean that, I mean, if everybody's doing it, it, it contributes to the market. So, uh, yeah, I, I would, I would say the same thing, is that sales are kinda strong, but the income on this one's pretty weak. So, uh, but we did feel like we did, you know, a substantial reduction to it. Maybe not enough, though we did, we did act on it.
All right, any notes?
No, sir.
Uh, any response for Hoven?
Uh, no.
Okay, I'm gonna close the hearing on BOE one seventy-one, which is the last one on the docket. Thank you, Mr. Hoven. So, it's all the same stuff we have.
We're gonna meet on Friday. We're gonna meet on Thursday and send that, and then send you a letter.
On Thursday? Okay.
Yeah, we'll, this Thursday, we'll decide market value of properties that have been before the board during this week. Uh, including these.
Okay.
And, uh, we'll, we'll decide among ourselves what we think the fair market value is and then we'll, we'll send the letter out there.
All right.
So, we'll shoot it.
All right, thank you for your time.
Sure.
Maybe, maybe next week, because he's not on Friday.
I, I should be here then Friday.
We're gonna be in break. Do you have more of my clients? Would you do this for?
Yes, uh-huh, yep.
All right, uh, any, uh, comments from the board? We're reading...
Thank you, sir.
Go on.
Right, so, uh, we're gonna be tomorrow. As far as I understand, there hasn't been an arena, so, um, but, uh, I do believe that TriPower is gonna still call in tomorrow, so, um, we can address that then. I did want to address before the board to give officially on the record, we have been dealing with kind of an interesting situation with, uh, Persimmon Investments, is that correct? And John Reed, I think is his name. Uh, I'm not exactly, he is a residential property and I'm not exactly sure what the reason was that he was pushed through, but maybe you could speak to that.
So, we, he had called up saying that he had seen on our website a value change and he said he called in and somebody had told him, "Well, wait until you get notification before you file, file an appeal." And so, he said, "Well, he waited around, he never got it." So, we looked at it, when he, he emailed me and I looked at it and it had the correct street address, but didn't have the right unit number on there. So, well, it didn't have a unit number on there at all. And so, there was a note in there saying that somebody had researched and tried to find it. Well, I don't think they did, they, they didn't find it, but if you looked at the deed, it said on the deed, not on the mailing address, but on the deed itself, that in their legal description, it did show the unit number. So, we felt like that was enough of a gray area that we should talk to the man. So, we sent him a new NO, uh, a, a new NOV, showing the value on it. We looked at the other sales of other properties, I don't know if I want to get into that.
No, we don't.
No, I, I, yeah, I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna go into that. So, the, the basics is, is that we felt like the, for him to get his due process, we should send him an NOV and then he would get it, it was past our certification or right at the point of certification, so he didn't wanna change value. So, we gave him a denial with explicit instructions. When you get that denial, file with the Board of Equalization and so you get your full due process.
Good.
And he has not followed through with that, even though we've practically written the thing for it.
And this has been well over a month that we've been dealing with.
It's the same guy?
Uh, yes.
Yes, and so, I, our feeling is that for him to get full due process, he should come before the board and whatever decision is made there is, is, is made, in fact.
But he still has... At the end of the day, it's...
Yes, he has, he has not even given us and we have, we have sent him the attachment with the form at least twice now, at least, but, I mean, he has been aware of this for a while. Oh, no, no, he, he gets it and then he responds, well, 'cause like, um, see, like, last week, he, I think he emailed me on Monday last week in response to that form that I sent him and said, "I'm out of town this week, but once I get back in the weekend, I'll fill it out." And then, I got an email from him yesterday, of course, I wouldn't hear yesterday, but I checked it, and he's once again asking, "What do I need to do to get this fixed?" But he was trying to explain to me like, like, he didn't wanna file a form, like, he just wanted to email me, "Hey, here's why it's wrong, fix it," you know? Like, so I don't know why he's still not getting it, but, I mean, we're cutting it close. And so, that, I mean, just, just to keep you in the loop, that's something that could...
We, we're, we're doing everything we can to be a common.
Yes, yeah.
So, his drop date, that date is next week, first part of it sometime?
Well, and, and that's, that's kinda the unique situation, 'cause normally after fifteen days, we can cut someone off. But since he, it was a gray area, he kinda didn't have, like, it's not like we gave him another fifteen days, you know? Like, he just kinda had time and with the assumption that he was gonna, gonna do that, you know?
No, it was...
Due to our grace, but...
But you have to post an agenda by...
Yeah, so, I mean, if we wanna be really technical about it, the thirty-first is our last day. So, if we wanna be completely, the last possible time he could get that to us, would have to be, 'cause that, that's on Monday, the thirty-first. And I believe that would be, that would mean the twenty-ninth or twenty-eighth?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-ninth is the Friday?
No, twenty-eighth, it's always three days from Friday to Monday, twenty-eighth.
Okay, whatever that Friday is, he would have to get it to us by nine o'clock that morning so that I can have an hour to, at least an hour to put it on.
You need to say, you need to say to him, "You must get this to me by, or else it's going away. Nobody can consider it." Somebody says to say, "He's tolling a statute, but he's already been told."
Yeah.
And his, as far as I'm concerned, his fifteen days on the tolling is already gone.
Yeah.
Y'all are being nice to, and keep talking to him.
Well, I mean, you know, we are just trying to be fair.
Trying to avoid a lawsuit.
And, and, and at this point, don't care, because, you know, we've done everything we can. Uh, one thing I do want to ask about is that we may have gotten a little bit, uh, over, over the years, you know, we had the discussion about, you know, no new evidence to be presented here. And we had the, uh, oh, it seemed like it was when the statute came through about there's no prior meeting or discussion about cases or whatever. At some point in time, maybe it's just me, but I thought we were kinda precluded from talking back and forth to these agents or owners or whatever a whole lot. If they filed with us, if they had filed a case with you, that, you know, why would we need to be holding any color discussions with them? You know, first of all, I don't wanna re, I don't wanna go be doing hearings again over the phone over stuff that we've already talked about, right? But, uh, but anyway, that's what this deal with Mr. Hoven was, is that, and I've had other people say, "Well, other boards will let us talk to you as much as you want to." We kinda got into the idea of that because of this debt. No, that's what, that's what we're saying, is that, you know, the agent, and this, he's one of a, a, a few that have been after, say, "Well, you know, we wanna talk about this a little bit more."
To you?
Yes.
Yes.
And, and we're going, you know, it's already filed with the board.
Yeah, right.
So, um...
Yeah, you're talking about the statute that says, and the waivers that we signed.
Right.
Uh, and, and I think you're right, once, once they file an appeal...
Inside your office.
That's kinda, that's what, that's what we believe, but, you know, they, they, they're, they're telling us and, and it's fine, that other boards will, you know, encourage the assessor to talk to him more and try to come up to an agreement beforehand. As I said, I don't really wanna be rehearing these things, you know, after... Now, if the guy says, "Look, I've got some information that I didn't have at the hearing that I think you might wanna see." Okay, I'll look at it and, and say, "Okay, yeah, that's fair enough, bring that to the board and we'll, we'll discuss it there." But I don't think that our guys should be discussing this stuff after we've done the hearing.
Well, you're gonna sign, you're signing an affidavit saying that...
Well, say that we haven't talked to you guys, but, but these guys are saying, "Well, you know, you can still talk to us." And anyway, we, we just wanna be on the same page. I don't care what other counties do, but I was under the impression that we should not be continually discussing this stuff.
I'd be nice if I were to tell you all.
Yeah.
It's over, it's over.
Yeah, I would, I would ask, I would ask him about that, um, and I could check out the statutes too. I, I think the, the way that, you know, just as I've read them in the past, is that obviously the affidavit is communication between you all.
Right.
But, I mean, I think if you want to talk to them, you can, I mean, 'cause, you know, oftentimes, you know, there'll be agreements that are reached beforehand, like with TriPower Energy tomorrow. But, um, I mean, as far as an obligation, I don't think you have any obligation to, 'cause the, the informal appeal is over. So, you've, you've given them due process. Now, that's, that's just me, I would ask him for sure and Gretchen, you know, 'cause she'll...
And you could, well, you could, yeah, we could, we could reach an agreement if you've got something that, you know, we can agree to without arguing, you know, the facts again. If you've got a figure...
And that's, and that's something right there, is that, you know, you open it back up and they're, and they're thinking, "Well, we're having another hearing."
Yes.
Yeah, so...
Yes, you know, if...
And you are, if you consider it and change your mind from what you initially said. You, you did have another hearing.
Yeah, yeah, and that's, that's, that's kinda where we're coming from. So, I mean, I said, if a guy says that, "I've got information that wasn't available at this time, would you please look at it?" I really don't, I'm not opposed to that, I just really don't wanna go into, you know, looking at the same stuff over and over again, you know? Which is, which is what they're asking, so...
Or you can even say, "I'll look at it and then we'll..." And so, when you get in front of the board, I won't say I didn't know about it.
Yeah.
Not render a decision to change your mind.
Okay.
I'm not inclined to look at anything new that wasn't presented after the informal. This is an appeal.
Right.
Yes, but he's extending the informal, is what he's doing, but not changing his mind.
Yeah, I, I would just say is that, you know, I would, I would, I would let the board know, is that, okay, this was not here, but I do believe it has merit, you know? But I would, but, and I might say, you know, based on this, you know, maybe we do need to lower the value extra for dollars. But, I don't, uh, I just wanna make sure we're clear on that, 'cause, uh, I was thinking that we were...
You can waive your, uh, uh, rejection to new stuff.
Okay, okay.
You can waive that, you can waive...
Okay, that's fair, fair enough, like I said. But if we, if we say, "No, we're, we don't agree," we'll just go to the board and hear it all, then, then we're all still good. Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I'll move it with you here.
I'll second that.
Oh, thank you.
All right, thank you, guys.
I appreciate it.